How are you doing?
Good.
How are you doing today?
Good evening. Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. It is great to see people who share our interests in the future and our elections. We are here tonight to talk about upgrading our voting technology. The replacement of our aging voting system is not something that we decided to act upon yesterday or last month. This has been a long-term goal of the city commissioners dating back to before I was sworn into office in 2016. The previous election board worked to draft a request for information and to get a bond question placed on the ballot from which $22 million was placed in the capital budget for this purpose. I would like to thank my colleagues Commissioner Clark and Commissioner Schmidt for their work on that along with former Mayor Nutter and former Commissioner Singer. We returned to this effort with renewed urgency in late 2017 before any action had been taken by the Department of State or the Governor. Our goal was, and still is, to purchase new voting equipment that is secure and easy to use for Philadelphia voters, and that would include a voter verifiable, auditable paper trail and new electronic poll books. For a voting municipality the size of Philadelphia with complex procurement and contracting procedures, this process usually takes three years. For example, the state of Delaware just wrapped up their three-year process to replace the Danaher machines. After the Governor's announcement and subsequent directives from the Department of State, we had to start from scratch when we were limited to choosing just one certified system. Subsequently, in meetings with the Department of State and the Governor's staff, it was communicated that they wish Philadelphia to move to a new system by 2020, and that decertification was on the table. Getting new machines in 2020 in the midst of the busiest election of the four-year cycle and with such national importance could be a disaster. As such, we will be looking to roll out a new voting equipment this November 2019. This means our three-year timeframe has become a one-year timeframe. With the RFP we released in November, we are assessing our ability to meet this ambitious goal. Many people in city government think that we are crazy, but I am determined to make this happen if we are able to. For this timeline to be feasible and realistic, we need to decide on new voting technology by February. This leaves time for us to acquire the machines, public education, and to train all of our city's many poll workers. I am on Twitter and I'm on Facebook, and I know that some people are unhappy about the process. Believe me, we are unhappy too. Originally, we had wanted to have the vendors come in and do demos all over the city so voters could touch and test the different options, but that is just not possible under the new timetable. Instead, I wanted to do community meetings all over the city to talk about the responses we got from the RFP, but that is not possible because of the city's procurement rules. All we are permitted to say about the RFP responses while they are being evaluated is that we received six responses. In fact, myself and my fellow commissioners are not allowed to even see the responses until the scoring committee has finished their process, which needs to be completed before we can vote on anything. But before we hear from the scoring committee, we want to hear from members of the public. We want all of you to have a chance to tell us your elected city commissioners what you would like to see in our next voting system. I also ask that you please do not forget about electronic poll books, which I am particularly passionate about. Electronic poll books will revolutionize the voting experience in Philadelphia, shorten lines, reduce confusion, and permit Philadelphia to move to same-day registration and early voting should these laws pass in Harrisburg. In closing, I would like to thank Mayor Kenny and his staff for their commitment, tenacity, and hard work. They have been beyond helpful in cutting through the red tape and tearing down all the walls that would otherwise prevent us from moving on this accelerated timeline. Before we open it up to public comment, Deputy Commissioner Nick Costodio has prepared a short PowerPoint. Thank you. Nick?
Hi, my name is Nick Semenow, Deputy Commissioner, and I shall review this. I'll probably go ahead on that as well. So first off, this February, the Department of State issued a directive that said that all new systems procured after that date must have a voter verifiable paper record, and they decert-- and they stopped certifying all systems that were previously certified, which means a lot that the commissioners put out in 2015 is no longer relevant, and we had to start all over from scratch. Then in April, they released a few more guidance that said a new system had to be selected by December 31st of this year, had to be examined and certified after January 1st, 2018. This right here does not require us to have a new system in place by 2020, but they did recommend that we-- that every county in the state implement in 2018. So what we're looking at here is our Scobrock project implementing electronic poll books and overhauling the local election manager system and vote machines in addition to our tabulation and our election night results publishing. So currently, we have Danaher 12.22s, which we've had since 2002. It's a full-face machine that essentially mimics the Johnstown and Chute machines that we had since 1950, 1950 to '02. Once again, it is full-face. It was able to accommodate Philadelphia's large ballots, which are very unique to Philadelphia County or other counties in the state. This right here, they had-- in addition to having 101 council large candidates, 24 candidates ran for Commissioner, 11 ran for Mayor, there were several, 20-- 21 CP candidates, 13 candidates for Sheriff, in addition to 16 candidates for six council United Districts, 10 council United Districts, the fifth council United District. Actually, '79 was the high watermark of ballots in the City of Philadelphia. They actually had to go to two machines for that primary, one machine for all Democrats, one machine for Republicans. Recently, we've also seen very large ballots here in the city, most notably in 2015 where we had 43 candidates for Common Police, and also in 2016, there's 24 Democrats ran for DNC delegate in the second congressional district. So it's just that it's talking about footprints inside of a polling place. Since we have full-face ballots, we're looking to replace those. We replaced them with another full-face system. It's a one-to-one replacement, so if you had, you know, if your division has two machines, you get two. If you went to a smaller screen, an agitated screen, maybe a two-to-one or three-to-one replacement rate depending on the size of the screen. We've been in contact with Orange County, California, which has similar-sized divisions. It's actually a slightly larger voting municipality than Philadelphia. They use HARP 12.1-inch systems that are actually one of the-- one of the systems that's vying for certification in Pennsylvania, and they send as many as 12 to their busiest divisions, which are essentially the same size as our busiest divisions. As you can imagine, that would cause us to have to reevaluate polling places throughout the city if we had to add so many additional machines. Complicating that is the City of Philadelphia have signed a consent decree for handicap voting. We had to make a-- handicap accessibility is a major criteria for polling places in the election here in the City of Philadelphia. And when it went in place, it actually consolidated polling places and reduced the sheer number of polling places we had by 398. It limits the pool of new locations we can select from, and anybody who has ever been involved in the process of moving a polling place knows it can be difficult finding accessible places, you know, there might be convenient places in the neighborhood, they might not have a ability to put a ramp in or an elevator for a handicap voter. This is particularly troublesome for a poll voter. So before the City of Philadelphia can purchase a system and use it in an election, it has to be certified with both the state and federal government. Before the state can start their process, it has to be in the final parts of federal testing. So far, four systems from two different vendors have come through both federal and state testing. There are several other vendors whose systems are in various states of the certification process of both the state and federal level. There is no federal certification for electronic poll books, but they are certified by the state of Pennsylvania. As Lisa mentioned, there's due to state procurement rules, we would like to talk about what kind of offices are out there, but we can't go too much into it, but we can talk about what types of machines have been currently certified by the state of Pennsylvania. There are full-face options, which are similar to the machines that we have currently, where most or all of the ballot is on one screen. Then you have smaller, agitated screens, this is going to be a 15 or 13-inch screen that each individual race would appear on the screen as one, and then you'd have the page through race by race by race. In 2015 general, that would mean there would be 39 screens, so we'd have 39 different races, so each ballot question, each retention race would be another screen. In addition to that, there are voter mark options where the voter fills in bubbles on a piece of paper. Anybody who's ever voted out of T in Philadelphia knows that as a voter marked system, everybody likes to compare it to voting similar to how you do an SAT test. That would also involve getting-- we still need to purchase equipment. You need to purchase precinct scanners, and each division would need an electronic ballot marking device. It's a federal requirement for handicap voters, and we still have to buy and print paper ballots. The state election code requires turning enough ballots for 110% of the registered voters in each division for every election. We're, as Lisa mentioned, we're also looking at electronic poll books. We're looking to replace our current poll book system, which is paper-based, and you know, that's where you go to vote. You walk up, you go, "Hi, my name is Nick Costodio, I live at, you know, this address," and the ladies or gentlemen behind the table start flipping through the book and locate you. We're looking to replace that with an electronic version. These are examples of poll books that are certified in the states of Pennsylvania. They can anywhere from a laptop to an iPad with stands that swivel and allow voters to check in. This right here would really improve throughput and reduce lines and hopefully speed up the process that it takes to vote at all of the polling places. In addition to this, because we're upgrading to new fancy technology, this fancy technology has certain additional storage requirements that our current systems don't need. So our warehouse will have to find one that is climate-controlled, which means it's heated in the winter, which our current warehouse is very living-heating, and air-conditioned in the summer, which apparently has no air conditioning. It'll also be dry, non-e雾, and dust-free, and this is our current place where our current machines are stored. So it would not be suitable for new upgraded equipment, either both the electronic poll packs or the handheld machines or scanners that scan the ballots. So costs, when we talk about costs, we're, from end to end, over the lifetime of this contract here, we're looking at this cost of about $15, $16 million end to end. This varies greatly on the system, but the system is only a small part of the cost. Well, it could be a significant part of the cost. But trainings are included in this number here for both the election board and the public. Outfitting and new warehouse has additional rents that would go along with that. The new systems are more costly to maintain and now include a software license, so in some cases, we're looking at greatly increasing our contracts out. Add on to those cases curtains and equipment. If we buy a proprietary system, we have to buy a lot of the products used to maintain the system from the vendor, such as paper ballots, ink, cleaning equipment. We also have to hire additional tech-oriented staff to maintain the machines, and we also have to dispose of our current equipment in an environment, in a safe manner that is also, you know, keeps the data safe. Current state of funding, as Lisa mentioned, based on the ballot question and in 2015, there's $22 million in fiscal year 20 capital budget, and also the City of Philadelphia is gaining $1.7 million from HAVA funding that is from the federal government matched by the state. Emmanuel Spiel, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Nick. We have a summary here, so everyone's comments will be recorded to the record. If you wish to comment, please get forward at Holy Cloud and state your name, if you are the city or from, everyone will have three minutes to speak. I guess that you please state the topic again. Also, I know that we are getting into election time and that there may be candidates for various officers in the room. I'm not going to stop any political speech, however, I do ask that you remember the purpose of the meeting and ask that you be respectful of that purpose, as respectful of that purpose as you can. And we'll ask Deputy Commissioner Seth Bluestein to read some of the comments that we've received from people who couldn't make the meeting onto the record, and then we will move to the first person.
Thank you, Commissioner. We received some email comments from some citizens who weren't able to make it. Jason Magatson is writing to ask that the city select new voting machines that have hand-marked paper ballots, are read by optical scanner, and be audited. Libby Rossop is a poll worker from the 27th Ward, is happy that we're transitioning to new machines with paper trail. She wants a system that is simple to use, secure from hacking. Systems being offered from vendors, some systems have shown themselves to be superior while not being expensive. One of the most secure systems is an optical scanner with hand-marked paper ballots. This is the system that was selected by Montgomery County officials after an extensive vetting process by officials and community members. The advantages of the paper ballot optical scanner system are: inspires voter confidence, secure, verifiable results, shorter lines, and resilient in emergencies. Also, we'd like to point out that printed ballots need to be clear, so the place to vote lines up only one obvious choice. Efforts need to be made to put ballot design, first-rate ballot design. Ms. Kim Johnson is a committee person from the 31st Ward. Ms. Johnson commented that she believes any new voting technology should have the capability for ranked choice voting. She also commented there needs to be an audible paper trail, as well as time for extensive training for the public and board workers. She commented that the current training should be extended in the amount of time and focus
Our first commenter? Hi, Christmas.
Sorry, Commissioner, I thought that was the attendance sheet, so I'll-- [crosstalk]
Yeah, we're on the impression of some attendance, okay.
Okay, first person in line.
Okay, I'm in line here.
I'm sorry.
First to this.
First person in line.
There you go. Whoops.
Is that your name and if you are the city that you're from?
Yeah, hi. My name's Tim Brown. I'm a project organizer for Philadelphia Neighborhood Networks. I'm one of the organizations represented here this evening. As we offer public comments on what we want for a new voting system, I'm reminded of a story from the old Cold War days. There's an adage about a story about the then-former Soviet leader Stalin, who's once remarked to his subordinate, "It's not who votes, but who votes that counts, but who counts the votes." And considering what we went through in 2016 and the concerns with the elections being hacked and the fact that the city's had machines that have been around for more than a decade, we're obviously concerned with the selection process. And sure, we're looking for a system that inspires voter confidence, is secure from hacking, a system that has a verifiable result, and something that can be easily counted. We want a system that people are familiar with, it's simple to understand, and to administer these machines. We want a system that keeps the lines moving on Election Day, and a system that will be resilient in the case of an Election Day emergency, and of course, we want a training program that's robust, comprehensive, and ongoing. I'll leave it to others here to discuss these topics in detail, but what I want to talk about a little bit is about making sure that our processes both-- [crosstalk] Are you out already? Okay, deliberate, it's deliberative and transparent. I took a look at the RFP that the city put together for the vendors, and it seems to be a good fake document that delves into the details of the selection process, including the requirements that are expected for a new voting system, and all this seems great. But I also noticed that in the RFP, that decision to select the machines could take place as early as Wednesday of next week, or Wednesday of February 13th, which is only a month from now. And we understand the city has a mandate from the Governor's Office to get a new voting system in place for the 2020 elections. And we also realize that the commissioners are trying to be prudent in getting this election system up and running in 2019 where we will do the least amount of damage while we work to figure this thing out. My concern is that we not get caught up in a rush to action. It may be the case that a decision can be made in a month, but we just want to make sure that this system, our priority is in selecting the best system, not meeting some arbitrary deadline. So, we're going to, we want to make sure that we have a system in place that's going to run for a decade, and we want to make sure that that system has a selection process that is transparent and inspires our confidence.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Next. Someone speak, sir? Okay.
Hi, everyone. Hello, commissioners. My name is Jen Devore. I'm a committee person, block captain, former election board worker. Full disclosure, I'm also a candidate for city commissioner, but I'm not going to talk about that. There's a long list of opportunities and features I wish to see the city implement when it comes to selecting new machines, including making paper ballots the standard and limiting the purchase of balling marketing devices and scanners. But no matter which system we end up implementing, my biggest ask is that the system features advanced capabilities to provide ballots on demand in multiple languages so that every eligible citizen can participate on Election Day. There are over 30-plus languages spoken actively in Philadelphia, and anyone that faces a language barrier themselves or has worked on the polls on Election Day knows that this is an accessibility issue that the current systems can't properly address. I've personally assisted limited English proficient individuals as they vote on Election Day, and it has been a frustrating experience for everyone involved, including, this most recent case, the city authorized translator I spoke to over the phone, who was based in California and didn't have access to a sample ballot to our division to translate from. So with all the new technology available, selecting a system that offers ballots on demand in multiple languages is, in my opinion, essential to accommodating all Philadelphians. As a city that celebrates its diversity and inclusiveness, Philadelphia should be a leader in accessibility with voting and empowering informed voters to participate effectively in our democracy. Thank you so much.
Thanks. Next.
Good evening. My name is Rich Garrella, and I live in Point Breeze. The issue here, which voting system to purchase, can be boiled down to one key question. There are a lot of other ones, but this is a key question. And that question, to me, is do most voters mark their ballots by hand with a pen, or do all voters have to use a touchscreen computer that marks the ballots for them? The national trend is toward hand-marked ballots for good reason. With hand-marked ballots, we get shorter lines because lots of people, not just two or three, can vote at once, and no one voter or broken machine holds up the line. With hand-marked ballots, even in a power outage, people can just keep voting because pens don't need electricity. We get meaningful audits of the paper ballots because there's no question of whether voter intent was correctly recorded. We get a system we can trust because it's simple and everyone can understand it. Finally, we'll need fewer of these expensive touchscreens, so we save millions of dollars. $10 to $15 million in the initial purchase is not a reasonable estimate, plus maintenance, storage, tech support, and delivery is listed. And the millions that we save with hand-marked ballots can be spent on improving accessibility with people, for people with disabilities, better training for poll workers, more promotion of voting itself, so forth. But enough about money, back to the issue of trust. Everyone here knows why it's so crucially important that the people trust the voting system. I want to point out it's not just the voting system that they have to trust, it's the process of choosing that voting system. If that process isn't transparent, you're baking distrust in from the beginning. That's why we, the voters, have to be part of the process. The commissioners are chosen by the people and have years of experience running elections. And there are staff members in the city commissioner's office who have decades of experience, and I think everybody here respects that. But there's someone else who has years of experience with elections in Philadelphia, and that's Philadelphia voters. So we want you, our commissioners, to explain to us clearly how the process works, what the factors are, and who exactly is responsible for the final choice. We want you to invite us as full partners in this process of moving to a voting system that's more transparent, more secure, more resilient, easier to use, and more auditable. You said you yourselves are unhappy with the process as it is. Then work with us to change that process in the ways that it can be changed. Dates can be changed, procedures perhaps can be changed. Just as in an election, getting the results fastest is not job one. Job one is getting to the right result with as much public participation as possible. Thank you.
Can you spell your last name?
Garrella, G-A-R-E-L-L-A.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mara Bohannon. I'm in the 47th Board of North Philadelphia, and full disclosure as well, I'm running for city commissioner. I'd like to put my opinion behind the hand-marked ballots with optical scanner. In 2016, I was really excited to vote in the presidential election. My candidate didn't win, and I was horrified when I, on the official rolls, it says I was a non-voter in that election. Pictures of me and my son at the polling place, it was an exciting day, but my vote was never counted, even though it was cast. If there was an optical scanner that after I marked my ballot down and it would scan into the system, I could see immediately that it was being recorded, and the ballot would then be hopefully placed in a secure box if there was an audit needed. With new machines, though, it's really critical that we focus on training. Many of our election officials are older Philadelphians who might not be comfortable with new technologies, but it's going to be a new technology for everyone, and right now, the trainings don't necessarily seem to work very well on Election Day in all locations, and if it's new machines, they need to be confident as they're running a new election. So the training needs to be comprehensive multiple times for a new machine, not just a one, you know, short session, and, you know, I think that with both a new machine and better training, we can have a better election result. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ruth Burchett, and I am the 32nd Ward Leader for the Republican Party. As someone who, over a 20-year-plus period, has served as machine operator, clerk, and judge of elections in the 32nd Ward, I will, I have come through the era of the big monstrous dream machines that we had and appreciated the new machines, computerized machines that we now use today. Having said that, I don't know as much about the paper ballot, but I do appreciate having been involved on election days when there's lines that extend far outside of the door on popular election days, where you have to literally have someone go and be the last person in line at 8 o'clock to make sure that everyone gets a chance to vote and not be disenfranchised. And so I think that the paper ballot process does have merit for-- it is critical that you consider adding additional days to your hearings, because the notice of this to the votership has, is inadequate, to put it mildly. And so I believe that more votership-- Um, and, and so I believe that more voters should have access. I, uh, function in an area where literacy is a huge issue. And so when you move to the paper ballot, you also move to, um, uh, having to help people understand what is on the written. The voters having a chance to make that adjustment, it is easy for people who are, have lower literacy levels to go and, and push a button. And I say that as someone who's run a community program for, uh, for GED and ABD, uh, as, as well. I also have to speak to the, the matter of collecting the votes at the end of the day and how problematic that is with the system that exists now, with police going from poll to poll to collect them, but also the cartridges, um, with the current machines and, and the malfunctioning that happens with that. And the machine operators, uh, who have varying levels of proficiency as, as well. So training is a very big issue as well. Thank you.
Good evening. Dennis Lee. I'm, I'm excited. I'm excited that we're having this conversation, right? So I have about three things, and, and I'll be done. Uh, number one, I, I think to iterate that we should do some type of voter survey so we can get more info. And you can do that through your website. I mean, asking the questions, once you, you've laid it out, uh, I wanted to ask the question, and you can answer it later. Uh, is the same, uh, the same, uh, items that were in the RFI earlier, this, uh, is that the same, is that what we're looking at? Okay? That's one question. Uh, the other one is, how many machine, how many, I'm sorry, I said voter machines? Voter electronic systems are we going to be getting? Is it going to be concurrent to, and I heard, I heard on the power, um, presentation that it's going to be concurrent to the amount of divisions. So if you can answer those questions later on, are we going to have some backup systems, what have you? But we need to increase the pool of voters that can, uh, can, can speak on this. Uh, this is an exciting time. What, what we pick will be better than what we have. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Elena Lynn. I live in Germantown. And, um, we've heard a bit about why hand-marked ballots with optical scanner devices are, um, will improve the experience because they will have shorter lines. You can have as many people marking ballots as necessary, and then putting them through the scanner. We've heard that they will be cost-effective relative to the much more expensive, um, electronic or, uh, ballot marking devices, um, especially in terms of maintenance, and you only need one per precinct. Um, but as a history teacher, I want to emphasize why they're also essential to encouraging trust in elections. Um, Colorado Secretary of State Wayne Williams says there are really two goals in an election process. One is to run it fairly and accurately, and the other, and just as important in many ways, is for the people to recognize that it has been done fairly and accurately. An NPR Marist poll conducted this past fall found that forty-seven percent of Americans believe that it was likely that not all those would be counted in the November election. This distrust drives down voter participation rates, and it leads to decreasing faith in our institutions and in our elected officials. Um, a verifiable paper trail of someone's own hand-marked ballot, which would be maintained, especially if we perform random audits, which are kind of the new, um, standard in making sure that elections have not been hacked or that there hasn't been mistakes in the ballots, um, and machines that are not being connected to the internet in any way, will improve trust in the system and make sure that people feel that their experience of voting and that their vote is actually being accurately cast. Combine that with the cheaper costs and with the shorter lines, and it's clear that the city of Philadelphia must choose optical scanning devices over hand-marked ballots.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity. Uh, my name's Josh Rosenberg. I live in the thirtieth ward in South Philadelphia. I was previously a judge of election in the eighth ward. Um, I share Dennis's excitement, the gentleman who went a few before me. This is a big opportunity for Philadelphia. Um, I agree with the comments you've heard so far about, um, voter-marked ballots over the full-faced or paginated screens. Um, even though Philadelphians are not so used to, you know, a pen-marked ballot at the polling location, I think it's still best for all the reasons you've heard. I'd suggest that we go a step further than just looking at the ballot device and the digital poll books we are talking about. The National Academies of Science released a report in September called "Securing the Vote: Protecting American Democracy." Um, I just give this report, and it really covers the entire, uh, voting and election apparatus, including best practices for auditing elections before, during, and after. I think these recommendations are valuable and important, and I encourage the three of you to read this full report that the academies put out and base recommendations on the consensus best practices that these researchers came up with and published in the report. There is a technology mentioned in these reports that I am personally fascinated by. Unfortunately, it's not yet commercially available, but I would encourage Philadelphia to look into it as it becomes more viable for the future. It's called an end-to-end voter verifiable system. In addition to paper ballots, these systems provide a receipt that the voter can take home with them and later verify online that their vote was counted and counted for the candidates that they expected. This still maintains the anonymity that people expect from the elections, and I think it's the future of where paper-marked balloting is going to go. I would love if Philadelphia could be a pioneer and keep an eye on end-to-end voter verifiable systems, and hopefully at some point in the future, when they're available, Philadelphia could be one of the first to adopt them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Franklin Kenter. I'm a judge of election in the eighteenth ward. As a poll worker who experienced, uh, just this past election, a poorly communicated last-minute division split and a polling place move, and the massive confusion that everybody in the division experienced, um, I firstly must share my concern over the short timeline and the implementation calendar. I also have to share, um, my preference for the reliability, accountability, and ease of use that hand-marked paper ballots provide, and my enthusiasm for any system that would accommodate same-day registration when the state allows it. If that's a digital poll book, terrific. But I'm struck by the comparison in the PowerPoint we just saw to Orange County. And, and while I appreciate the numerical comparison between the counties, um, unlike the tech-savvy California citizens I imagine, um, our voters and our poll workers have a dramatically varying experience and familiarity with technology. No amount of training will adequately bridge, uh, what I perceive to be a significant digital competency gap, or will prepare us for the confusion and potential snafus ensuing with digital machines, um, whether they're paginated or, or full-face. My support, though, for a voter verifiable paper trail, um, I think will, 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 will contribute to a culture of really, um, a positive culture of voting here in Philadelphia and improving voter confidence. And I hope that the system that we choose, um, for our city will build that culture here. Thank you.
Yes, hello. My name is Gary G. Watson. I live in the thirty-fourth ward section. I'm just a citizen. I don't come here with the credentials of any political background, but I come here as a citizen who voted for the last forty-something years. I stay here as a citizen who votes in the city. We're being overloaded with a lot of challenges. The climate of us having our votes being denied, robbed from us, whether it's done by gerrymandering or whatever. I don't know why Philadelphia don't take this grand opportunity to be in the forefront of groundbreaking new technology when it's out there. It's out there. You shouldn't not have to be talking about something as primitive, as whether we should institute a paper backup system. Why can't Philadelphia step in the front of this problem? It's an epidemic, whether it's Florida, whether it's Georgia. We don't need to get caught up in this, and I find it embarrassing. So like my friend Lee, I'm, I'm also applauding you for having this meeting, but please listen to the voters as well as the politicians. You guys have an opportunity to pick the best system that can make Philadelphia proud, even if we have to be thinking out of the box and in the future. There's no reason why we should be this primitive on this type of topic in 2019. Thank you for the opportunity. Gary Watson, Gary G. Watson.
Good evening. My name is Kate Rivera. I'm here today as a concerned citizen and also as a majority inspector of elections in my division, Ward thirty-one, Division three. I decided to become a poll worker in 2017 because I care about free and fair elections in Philadelphia. Since my election, I've had the opportunity to be inspired by my neighbors and their excitement and dedication to voting. During the last election in November 2018, an older woman came hobbling into our polling place, supported just barely by a young girl. It was clear that she was not well enough to leave her bed. However, she told us, "I've never missed an election, and I'm not about to start now." I can't imagine what the look on her face would have been if I had told her that with our current voting technology, we have no way of ensuring that her vote was being counted because our voting machines have no paper trail. So I commend the city for issuing an RFP to invest in new voting technology. This is a major investment that will have important implications for many years to come, and that's why I also urge a thorough and transparent decision-making process that incorporates input from experts in a wide variety of stakeholder groups. So in conclusion, I, I humbly ask city commissioners to consider, one, an open and transparent decision-making process that incorporates feedback from all important stakeholders and includes additional public hearings and public demonstrations of the various voting machine systems. Two, an investment in a voting system, as recommended by national experts, that allows voters to mark a paper ballot by hand with a pen, eliminating any technology between the voter and the ballot, and then put in a ballot box that includes a scanner. And finally, three, to develop a robust training and resource toolkit for poll workers leading up to and during each election to improve accurate and efficient operation of the new voting technology. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Margaret Lenzey. Uh, I'm a resident of Northwest Philadelphia. I'm a committee person in the ninth ward, and I'm also a member of Neighborhood Networks. As I listened to the testimony tonight, uh, I am in favor of the, uh, open, transparent systems that have been talked about in terms of the paper ballot and the optical scanner. But one thing that was missing from all of the testimony was the upfront process in voting, and that is the voter registration process when people walk through the door, and they have to be, uh, signed in to make sure you're in the book. I mean, I have witnessed this process where it does take four people, about four people to do this process, you know, two big books, index cards, and a signing system. That system has caused so much, um, delay and inefficiency. Uh, at the last election, most people, in the November election, most people were waiting just to sign in. We had lines going out the door because they, the system could not process the people just to sign them in. Once they got to the voting machine, it was, it was quicker. So I am very much in favor of the electronic, uh, system that you, uh, showed on the screen for signing in people. I think this will save the, the city a lot, a lot of money. Also, it will be much more efficient, although I think that you may have to have some higher-trained people at that end in order to process the voter, the voter registers, because people will have to be able to use portable computers and, and things of that nature. And sometimes when I see the people that are doing these jobs, that, I mean, it's wonderful. They've been doing it for many, many years, but I'm, I'm not sure that they're going to be up to this, up, up to the system. So please consider that very seriously. It's, it will make this whole system much easier, and it will encourage people to make sure they get in there, and they'll be able to spend more of their time voting as opposed waiting to register. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jacqueline Wiggins. I'm a resident of North Central Philadelphia. I'm also a committee person, thirty-second ward, eleventh division. I'm not sure how this evening was communicated, but I would have appreciated having all of this in terms of this point about new election machines and so forth communicated, perhaps through your office, directly to some of us that have to do the work of getting the vote out. We have to have a means of communication so that people understand the significance of this type of change, because it will be on those of us who are committee people and others to really talk to people and, and get them acclimated to any newness, as I think you're familiar with. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Susan Strasburg. I'm a citizen, and my concern, I have a, one concern about the optical scanner. They can now, if you use your fingerprint, people can capture that fingerprint and print it out in a three-D scanner, and now they have your fingerprint to, for whatever reason, if they want to, whatever you have security with your fingerprint. I don't, I don't know enough about the technology of an optical scanner to know that if we all registered our eyes, if they could not be captured at some point, and then they would have your eye, and it, that's my concern, because now the fingerprint thing can be hacked and they can reproduce your fingerprint. So, like I said, I don't know about the technology, but that's a concern for me. Thank you.
Can you spell your last name, please?
Thank you.
Jim Marsh, thirtieth ward, citizen. Um, the only point I wanted to make was that there've been a lot of good comments here today, and, um, the communication and notice of the hearing, uh, I kind of accidentally got a notice of it, and I know there's another date on Saturday at nine-thirty, but there've been so many good comments, and I think that, uh, the comments from the, the people, the voters, need, uh, a more ample, uh, avenue, uh, to get through to, to the commissioners. Uh, I don't know if there are any more hearings scheduled after, uh, Saturday. I think it's good that you're trying to roll this out in 2019, but, uh, I don't know if the, the notice was adequate to get, uh, a lot of the more good comments that could come from, from the voters, and, uh, I think that, uh, really that could be beneficial. And I think that the, the voters need to be, uh, how they're receiving this needs to be, uh, considered, and especially when I'm hearing that even the, some committee people did not, uh, get real good communications who were actually working, um, during the elections. So I would just encourage, if at all possible, and also email responses, uh, I would encourage the commissioners that they can somehow, uh, add, uh, more of a comment period, uh, so that they can get more of these good comments from the voters. Though, I do think it's good to try to get this done in 2019 and avoid having to do it in 2020. So that's my comment. Thanks.
Hello. My name is Gloria Gilman. I'm the chair of Philly Neighborhood Networks. I'm also a committee person and part of the ward leadership of the second ward. I agree with most of what was said here today, especially that, um, less technology is often safer, we've learned, than more technology. And so I would encourage you to accept the handwritten ballots with the optical scanner, but check the technology to make sure that it's as unhackable as possible. I'm concerned about the lack of transparency in the short, uh, timeframe that you've had to deal with this, and as part of that, I think that the public here is not aware that you will be, that there is a committee, uh, that is vetting all of these machines, and that committee will make recommendations to the three of you, uh, of a limited number of, uh, the vendors who have, uh, made, uh, applications to, um, have you accept their machines or systems. Um, so I'm concerned that we have no idea who those people are, what their names are, what criteria they use, um, and, uh, and what protection there is from any influence from the vendors. I'm also concerned that, uh, that they are not having, that they do not have access to all of this input, that everybody has taken their time and energy and hope for, uh, for input into this democratic system, um, that that won't be taken into consideration as I understand our comments do not get, uh, passed on to the, uh, committee. So I would ask that, um, you institute, uh, an effort to get that committee to have access to all of tonight's and Saturday's input, and any other input from the public. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to thank, once again, everyone for coming this evening. I would especially like to thank our poll workers, who not only just do a fantastic job for us on Election Day. We can't do elections without you, and for you to, in addition to that time that you take on Election Day, to really uphold democracy in Philadelphia, for you to come out again tonight to be part of this hearing, really says a lot about your commitment to voting in Philadelphia, and it does not go unrecognized. Thank you all very much. Thank you, everyone, for being here. We'll be back again on Saturday. Have a great evening.